I'm hoping July it'll calm down a little bit.
I'd like to call to order the Springbrough Community Schools Board of Education meeting for June 20th, 2017, roll call.
Anderson, Fab, yes, Palange, Stupi.
Here.
Stand for the question. The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. President, this isn't on the agenda, but I wanted to do something tonight just because of some things that happened last week. Last Thursday night was a tough night for the Springbrough family. We lost two students, one a recent graduate and one an incoming fifth grader. We lost Garrison Hurt, 2017 graduate, and we lost Gabby Insko, an entering fifth grader at Dennis. As a district, our thoughts and prayers are with both families and their friends and their extended family, and so tonight I thought it would be most appropriate for me to have a moment of silence for these families. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, moving on. 1.2, the appointment of Dan Good as Board of Education member to fill the vacancy of Dr. Lott. You can say it.
All right, you're going to be up here. Maybe by the flag. I want to make sure that they can see you, so. Do you, Dan Good, solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the constitutions of the United States and the state of Ohio and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as members of the Board of Education of the Springbrough Community City School District Warren County, Ohio, to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and thereafter to be enacted during your continuance in said office and until your successor is elected and qualified?
I do. Thank you.
We'll wait till Charles gets here to.
Do you want to put your hands up?
Moving on.
Adoption.
The adoption of the agenda, please. Is there a motion? You can participate now.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Roll call.
All right, Stupi.
Yes.
Palange.
Yes.
Fab.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
1.5, approval of the June 8th, 2017 minutes. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Fab.
Yes.
Palange.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Stupi.
Yes. 1.6, approval of the June 14th, 2017 special Board of Education meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Fab.
Yes.
Palange.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Stupi.
Yes. Mr. President, under public participation, introduction to guests. 2.1 is student athlete award presentation. We're still waiting for one athlete, and I want to wait before we do that. Now, we have a couple of choices. We could either take a break now, or we could just continue down on the agenda, and when that athlete gets here, we'll go back to that, if that's agreed. All right, we can just continue.
All right, moving on to 2.2. Anybody from the Springbrough Education Association? 2.3 from the classified employees? We didn't have any pre-arranged today. Any public participation on agenda item that we're going to talk about tonight? Okay, moving on to the work session.
There is one change, Mr. President, and I take full blame. I didn't notice till right now. We do need to add a 3.4, a discussion of the 365 policy that was supposed to be added, and it was not added. Obviously, we had a lot of communication. Somehow, my assistant, I didn't get that communication to her. But let's make that 3.4. So we'll start with 3.2, textbook adoption and recup.
Could I, can I, Mr. President, since that is added, I would like to be on public participation, and I'd like to speak on the 365.
That makes sense. I apologize that I didn't say it earlier.
You know what, though? I'm sorry. What I'm asking is not 365, it's something else. Sorry.
Okay.
It's about pay-to-play fees, and so I'm confused.
All right.
Sorry. Yeah, sorry about that.
Never mind. But because it's a work session thing anyway, people will be able to talk when it happens. So, all right, we can move with 3.2, textbook adoptions. Mrs. Scoop.
Good evening, Mr. Frayer, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Sutcliffe, Senator Ford. I give you updated how we see here. All of the courses are online or hard copies are on DVD, same with all figures. These textbook adoptions are typical spring adoptions for the following school year. You'll see two new AP courses, which I presented to you earlier in the year, and those new AP courses, obviously, read new textbooks. And you will also see that we have a listing of textbooks that are new adoptions for previous courses, the courses that were already in existence where we're updating the textbooks. So we do that about every eight to 10 years or so in the past. Now, we're trying to get ourselves on a six-year turnaround of textbook updates. The biology is an update of previous texts. In the biology textbook that we would like to adopt is through the Pearson Company. The AP English Language and Composition is a new course, stated earlier, for next school year. The recommendation of the texts for this book are through the College Board. All AP level courses, we do adopt all textbooks that are recommended by the College Board organization. So College Board gives us a listing of different courses or different textbooks for each course, and then our teachers and students make the choice of which textbooks for the course. The AP Human Geography is a new course for 7 to 18. Again, that text is recommended by the College Board. US History is an update of previous texts, and you'll be looking at Howton, Metlemarport for that one, and World History is an update of previous texts, and we're looking at McGraw-Hill. So each department is expected to look at three or more textbooks. Our typical textbook companies are the three large ones that we look at, and then sometimes we look at some smaller companies if they have something that's up to date that does fit our course of study and meets our curriculum requirements. This year, we're looking at Pearson, Howton, Metlemarport, and McGraw-Hill for various adoptions across those two departments. You'll see that Follett is our rep for our AP English Language and Composition text. Can I answer any questions of the board members on this?
Are there any online options for any of these, or is hard copy the only option?
That's a great question. For the AP courses, so for the AP English Language and Composition and AP Human Geography, those are texts that will go in the backpack of the students, so those go home in their backpack, they are returned at the end of the year for the next year's group of students. The biology, US History, and World History are all 35 per classroom set and online access for students, same as what we've done in past years with mathematics and English Language Arts. So those are online editions. The savings on that is, let's see, overall, our savings on that is going to be, we run around 30, we run around 40, 45,000 for an update on a class set for 500. If we're purchasing texts for 500, we'd be looking at over 100,000 per adoption.
So this is the one classroom hard copy set, and then the online for all of the students that are taking that class?
Yes.
Until, until we get another adoption?
The six, yeah, the six-year adoption, yes. And at the end of six years, if we're in a situation whereby we're satisfied with our online edition and we want to extend that contract out, we have the option to extend that after the sixth year.
So there's no additional cost on two through six? This is the one-time cost? Is that?
That's correct. You got that done on, yes.
Okay, and then for...
These are the only costs that we will infer between now and six years out from now.
Okay, and then if there's any, if there are any updates, they will be made to the online edition?
Yes.
If the kids are accessing them online?
Yes.
So they just won't be on the hard copy?
Right. And that, those are free upgrades for us, so they don't charge us when they do the upgrades.
Okay, sounds great.
Any other questions?
I do have, I do have one more question. How are we getting the geography and composition, like 3,600 and 5,400? How are those so cheap when we're looking at 40,000 for the other?
The AP English Language and Composition is 15 copies, whereas those copies that run around at 40,000 mark, those copies are covering about 500 student editions. So those are the online, the AP English Language.
Oh, for the online.
And AP Human Geography, those are hard copy texts that we purchase around 50, so we expect around 50 students to sign up for those two courses. And then the other three, those are between 450 student copy online editions and 500 student editions online.
Okay, that makes sense. Okay.
And that's dependent upon enrollment. So in our, for instance, our World History, I ordered 450 online editions because we get around 50 students that take the AP level of that course.
Great.
Whereas, for instance, the biology, we would order 500 of those because AP biology is subsequent to CP biology, and this biology edition covers general level biology as well as college prep biology. And all of our students take one of those two courses.
Right.
So you'll see that in 500, whereas some of the others you'll see at 450 because there's a sister class that's an AP where the students do not take the CP and the AP.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All textbooks were budgeted for, actually, Mrs. Floyd moved these monies over from last year's budget. When I say last year's budget, the June 30th is where that ends, and she has moved them into next year, so these, if these are approved, will be purchased on a July 1PO out of next year's funds that we'll transfer out of last year.
Do these updates follow like a similar process to what we do with some of the other, in terms of parent review, those sorts of things? When we do new textbooks, we follow a similar process with the updated editions?
We, yeah, we do a similar process. We're also in a pattern now of actually doing pilots in the classroom where students are using the texts during the second semester. So the teachers start looking at the texts in January, they start implementing the units from the texts within their, their current classroom so that they can see, okay, does this unit work with these students? Does it not work? That way, they're not coming in completely cold. So our reps came in in January, did their presentations. Teachers receive textbooks in February, so some of these class sets are already in classrooms whereby students have already used, piloted some of the programs. And we don't necessarily always purchase pilots, so we might have a pilot going on within the classrooms where the teacher and the students might say, yeah, particularly care for the layout of this, or doesn't read well, and then the teacher says, okay, we're not going to use this text, we're going to use a different text. So they have what I would call hands-on since February, with the exception of the AP English Language and Com and Human Geography because we don't have any students to work on. So those who are not piloting, all three of the others that are on pilots.
So new books are more so, it's thrown out to the community, offering you, offering the review, but for updates, we're having students pilot.
I'll be honest, last year I had three community members...
Oh, I know, it's, not many people do it, but I know you've offered it in the past.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want anybody to misinterpret that, you know, we have 50 parents come in and look at these books and give input, because we did not. There doesn't seem to be that the level of interest in looking at possibly proposed textbook purchases, but we do make everything available for community input.
Thank you.
I think it's a great idea, having the kids check them out and see if it seems like it's something that is of interest and helps them learn.
Yeah, so three of the five have had kids on.
Yeah, it's great. Thanks.
Okay, Mr. President, we're going to have, I believe, John is this yours?
Yes.
All right, 3.3, discussion to increase receptionist time.
Right. Currently, we have, we have three receptionists in the district, one at Dennis, one at Five Points, and then we have a part-time at the high school. And the, the part-time at the high school, when she's done with her day, then the building aide comes and relieves her, so that there's someone out front the whole time. In discussions we've been having for actually a couple of years, but especially this past year, we've noticed that it's, it's harder and harder to ensure that we have a consistent person in the lunchroom, in the commons area during lunches, and that makes it difficult for the building principals to run down there to deal with all the other special ed things that are going on, everything that happens in a normal day. So, a fairly easy fix that's fairly inexpensive is, right now, the current receptionist works 4.75 hours at the high school. We're going to increase, we want to increase that 7.25, so it's just two and a half extra hours for this person. And what that'll do is that'll allow the building aide that's in Kyle's building to be the consistent force in the cafeteria, so that every day we know, and the building aide is always there. I mean, she never misses. She's, she's excellent at that. So it'll give us some, some excellent consistency within the lunchtime period. We don't have problems in the lunchroom, but you need that adult there at all times. So that's why we're asking for that, the increase there, two and a half hours for the receptionist to bring her to, to full time.
And both of those things that you heard will be approved later on due to timeliness of. So there's no questions on that? I'll tell you, Mr. President, kind of talked back and forth with Mr. Martin. We're going to move forward, students, with your recognition right now. And so Mr. Martin and Mr. Brunchy are here tonight as principal and assistant athletic director to thank some amazing students and congratulate them on what they've done this year. So with that, Mr. Martin, Mrs. Brunchy, the floor is yours.
What? It's, wait, doesn't matter, it's on. You talk loud enough anyway.
That's true. I need...
Thank you, Mr. Strayer and school board members, for the opportunity to be here on a great evening to recognize eight of our student athletes that have represented Springbrough High School, lead this grade in the community very well. All these students exemplify what it means to be a Springbrough Panther. They do not only excel on the playing field, but also in the classroom, which is extremely important. Their work ethic and determination and character have contributed to their overwhelming success. Starting off, we're going to start by season, so the first season we'll start with is our fall athletes. Christian Wright is our first student athlete we're going to recognize. Christian is a two-time GWALK Player of the Year. This season, he was also named Miami Valley Player of the Year, was also first team All State. Christian is going to continue his soccer career at Wright State University next year and was an integral part to our Long West tournament run we've ever had in school history when our boys made it to the regional finals and lost a heartbreaker to Beaver Creek at Centerville this year. Great game, kids fought hard. So the first one is Christian Wright.
And we'll get a picture at the end. What we'll do is we'll get a picture of all of you at the end and with the Board of Education at the end.
Next student athlete is Cam Davis, plays girls soccer. Cam is a sophomore, also named GWALK Player of the Year and led a team to a state runner-up finish. Like Christian, she was named Miami Valley Player of the Year and first team All Ohio. She was also named to the National Soccer Coaches of American, the American, All American Team, which we did recognize her for at one of our boys' bouncy games this year, and we look forward to having, seeing Cam back in the blue and white next season. Next is Josh Gilkerson for boys golf. Josh finished an outstanding golf career at Springbrough and took home his second to the second of GWALK Player of the Year. Josh won the Ohio Junior Championship last summer and also is named the Penn State, Penn Station Athlete of the Month this year, which we had a little filming in the OX gym this year, I think was posted on our Facebook page, which was a great event for Josh. Josh will continue his career at Kent State University. Congratulations, Josh. We have another fall athlete that might be coming in here late, so I'll, I'll skip over her for right now, move into our winter athletes. First is Zach Baker for boys swimming. Zach had a phenomenal senior season in the pool for the Panthers. In addition to being named GWALK Athlete of the Year, he was the district champion in the 100 breaststroke. Zach also placed fourth in the state and the 200 IM and the 100 breaststroke and set school records in both events while helping the boys' teams to an 11th place finish at the state, which is the best finish ever in school history for a boys' swimming team. Zach will continue his swimming career next year at the University of Cincinnati. Congratulations, Zach. Next student athlete is also a swimmer, Sally Cloud. Sally excelled for the Panthers in her senior year. She was named GWALK Player of the Year while setting school records in the 200 and 500 freestyle events. She placed fifth in the 200 free and ninth in the 500 at state meet Cannon. She was voted by coaches as the recipient of the Helen B. Cricket Award at her senior awards night back in May, and Sally will take her talents and swim at Texas Christian University next year. Moving into our spring athletes, for baseball, Justin McConnell. Justin was voted GWALK Player of the Year after a phenomenal senior baseball season, also named Miami Valley Player of the Year and was selected first team All Ohio. Justin hit a 3-1 homerun to clinch GWALK West championship for the Panthers this season, probably a memory he'll never forget. He was a recipient of the National Federation of High Schools Award of Excellence, and Justin will be continuing his baseball career at Wright State University. Congratulations to Justin. Next student athlete is Jack Deal for boys tennis. Jack finished off a brilliant tennis career at Springbrough, which included winning his second GWALK Athlete of the Year award. Jack was a four-year letterman and is one of the most decorated boys tennis players we've had here in school history at Springbrough. As impressive as his competition on the court, on the court, Jack excelled in the classroom as well. He received GWALK Scholar-Athlete recognition as well as the OHSA Scholar-Athlete Award, which was, which is given to, only to four-year letter winners with the highest GPA in the senior class. Jack will focus on his academics at the next level, majoring in finance at Miami University. Congratulations, Jack. And our last student athlete who has not come in yet, but is Lexi Savage, who is also a golfer for the girls' golf team. Lexi actually was playing in a tournament at Heatherwood today, so we knew that she might be a little late. She was named GWALK Player of the Year after performance at the preseason GWALK championship. Lexi was a team leader and member of the Panther Athletic Council, which was our first year of having the PAC, which is a, a great group that Mr. Rose has put together to meet with kids throughout the year, get feedback regarding athletics and being a student athlete. And we look forward to another great season this year as Lexi returns for her senior season next year. She's only a junior this year, so congratulations to Lexi. As we talked about, all these students exhibit great character, and as a father of two daughters at home, I can tell you, parents that are here, you guys have done a phenomenal job. If my kids can grow up to exemplify what they exemplify, I'll be a very, very happy father. So good luck to all of the parents, because you guys have some fine young men and young ladies up here. So congratulations to all of our student athletes.
Let these guys get a picture, and again, what we'll do is get a picture with them, with our principal and assistant athletic director, and then one with the board. It's an opportunity for the Board of Education to ask questions of the best student athletes here at Springbrough. Now, I told you guys, you may have a two, three-minute speech here. Can we have any questions?
We have a lot of students participating in athletics. What does that make the year as an athlete?
Not all of you, whoever wants to say.
All the face. All right, it's been a big part of my basketball career, playing tennis all four years. I think it's important to balance between athletics and my, and it's been awful to...
Anybody else? What do the athletes need of you?
I think it helps, like, bring you back to the school, like, when the girls' soccer team went to state and stuff, I feel like they really brought us together as a district too.
Any other questions?
I don't have a question, I just have a statement.
Sure.
I know, right? I just, it's awesome for me because having a senior or a graduated, I guess, graduate, a few of these kids have grown up in our house, so congratulations to you parents too to see how you have raised your kids, and to you graduates, you have done an awesome job, and just, I know the dedication that you've given to these, to your athletics, but also to who you are, the character that you have, and the people you are, the academics. So you're going to do an awesome job next year, so just kudos to you. You're great kids, seniors, graduates, awesome. I'm excited for you.
All right, each line them up. Let's do some pictures. What's that?
Can we post?
We can post, we'll do all the pictures going on, yeah. We're not going to continue the portion. We're going to stand you right here. All right, if you want, good.
So here is Lexi. Lexi's a junior, obviously will be a senior next year here at Springbrough, correct, Lexi?
Okay, good.
Nice, was named the GWALK Player of the Year for girls' golf after performance at the preseason GWALK championship. Lexi was a team leader and also a member of the Panther Athletic Council, so I know that you thoroughly enjoyed meeting with Mr. Rose and the other student athletes. And we look forward to having Lexi next year as a senior on our golf team, so congratulations, Lexi.
Groundhog, yeah, groundhog day. Now, every one of them gave a four-minute speech. No, you're good. Let's go ahead and get their pictures now. Now, family, friends of the athletes, athletes, you guys can stick around, but you don't have, this is a great thing in fact. Mr. President, it's a five-minute recess, so if you want to talk, it's a question to have a discussion, but if you don't have a presentation, it's just open up for more discussion.
Nope.
Discussion on 365, if there's any discussion on it.
Do you want to just bring it up?
Well, we just, we don't have a presentation, it's just obvious. Go ahead.
So here's my question. With the 365, back when Dave and I were on policy last year, initially, the discussion was, years ago, and I don't know how many, four or five years ago, we had a policy in place that if, hang on, I don't have my microphone.
Yeah, Tom. But if somebody in a program, some sort of a club, athletic team, band, whatever, was involved with something with alcohol or drugs, that there would be a consequence whether you were in season or out of season. That changed with the prior board, and we started discussing it again last year about bringing that. It's not, the policy wasn't called 365, but it kind of got that name, 365 policy, because 365 days a year, you would be held accountable whether you were in season or out of season. And then at that policy committee, I remember we went back and forth about what clubs are outside after curricular activities would be included with that, because you have the fishing club, the German club, that really, there's no, there's nothing you can really take away from that, so it doesn't make sense to have every single group a part of that. And so at that time, I don't remember what it was, but I remember Kyle came up with something that it seemed to make sense, that that was a good way to differentiate, that it made it very fair, very consistent among the groups. I don't remember if it was if they perform, if they, hang on just a second, if they pay to be part of that group. I don't remember what it was. Let me just kind of finish off my story of, I don't remember the details of that. And then we put it, we put this policy on hold for this year, and when it came up in the athletic handbook, that's when I asked, do we need to alter a policy to match our handbook? And so in the board agenda, I saw that we took off two policies that had to do with the alcohol and drugs, and we still have a policy on alcohol, tobacco, drugs with the school district for all students. And we still have a policy on alcohol, tobacco, drugs with the school district for all students. But there was another one that was there of specific consequences of if you're going to be involved with, and ironically, and I, as I dug deeper into this, it specifically states athletics. And the question is, are athletics being, are we targeting athletes where we're not looking at what the expectation is with other, you know, organized strings or outside organizations? So, I read what you said with Miola today, that each of these organizations have, NHS has different expectations and band has different expectations. Where I am struggling with that, and I get it, that all these other districts don't do that, I have a hard time understanding if something is illegal, why we as a district would not have the same expectation for all outside organizations, whether you're in athletics or strings or band, that if you do this the first time, this is what the consequence is. The second time, this is what the consequence is. Because I would feel very frustrated that this is the expectation if my kid is in this, but he can be with a student that is involved with this club and/or, you know, sporting event or sporting team, whatever, and the expectation is different. So, personally, I'd just like to have a discussion around what are we going to do with that? Are we just going to say all these groups are on their own and it's up to the families that are involved with these groups to figure out through the communication of that group, this is what the consequence is if you're involved with that? Or, it seems to me that it would be a better way to communicate out that the district has one policy that families can go to and we know that if one of my boys is caught drinking, this is the consequence the first time, the second time, the third time, the fourth time. Whether you're an athlete, whether you're a trombone player, whether you play the violin, this is the consequence because we value this in Springbrough, that this is a high priority to us. So, we're going to have consistency. So, and it, I just feel like it gives teeth to the, to the expectation that we as a district, we're stepping up and we're saying, we're going to have this policy and we don't, it doesn't matter to us what type of group you're part of, we're going to have consistency. So.
I know there's been about a three-year discussion of this. Coming here my first year, you know, a lot of the conversation was around athletics. I was at a meeting with the Athletic Council where all the coaches gave the input to this. I can remember that night, the conversation being, what about the other clubs? And I know Mr. Martin and Mr. Rhodes had some comments about what other clubs do that are a little bit more of an expectation, some that are less. Typically, the band would follow along, but that's obviously not the stone. Mr. Martin, can you help as far as where we're at with other organizations and why the conversation happened here?
Yeah. Currently, when you look at known, I would say, policies or maybe a better word would be expectations for something like this, would be your athletics, your band, junior ROTC.
Right.
And I would say that ROTC has a current policy or code of conduct regarding exactly what the outcome would be, but I know that's one that they have held students accountable for in the past, if that has, if for, actually, there's a lot more, there's more strict just behavior and all those types of things. That's their whole, their expectation is completely different in that regard. And then you have NHS. So, those are, those are four groups right now that I know that had that expectation. Do they all have a current code of conduct that's signed? No. I know, like, I don't know if ROTC does. But when you look at, when you say clubs or activities, those are the four that kind of come to mind to me right now. When you're looking at the German club, the fishing club, the Republicans' club, the, all those, they have nothing of sort that aligns with any type of signage of a code of conduct or a policy regarding how code of conduct or drugs.
Would you put strings with band?
I would not, because strings is class-oriented. So, when you think about like choir and strings, they're going to OMBAs, but that's an academic performance. So, we wouldn't, if a kid.
When you say band, you say marching?
Yeah, when we say band, we're talking marching band. So, marching band is an extracurricular activity. We're not talking about concert or wind ensemble.
And that was the discussion at the policy committee? That was the differentiation?
So, if we have a kid who does something that falls under the policy, that's, you know, we're not, we're not having them not take a biology test because of something like that. So, that's where we put like choir and the wind ensemble, concert and strings, kind of in that category. So, marching band, the reason why they would have one, and they, they do have a code of conduct. And actually, I've been to talks with Mr. Palmer about what that code looks like, what do you want to add, what do you want to take away. They have one, it's not nearly as conducive as what the athletic one is as far as length and just detail. So, that would be the reason why marching band would have one. But you're still talking to 115, 120, you know, student athletes in that area. So, those are things, this is right off the top of my head that, you know, that come to, that come to mind. Regarding like the National Honor Society, that is one that, to be honest, is really held through a panel. So, that is something where if there's a situation, they discuss that, they make a determination with a panel of adults. How, where are we going to go here? Is that a probation, depending on whatever it may be? Is it a probation all the way to suspension to removal? So, once again, if they had that expectation in there, it's just, it's different than what the athletic code of conduct is for other basketball clubs.
So, where did they get left at the policy committee? I mean, it sounds like there works in the initial discussion, it got tabled, and it just kind of came back up through the athletics organically with the coaches? I mean, did it just?
Like last spring, what was that?
Can I say, because I was on policy too, can I tell you what we, what I think we did? I think what Kyle said was anything that was grade point-driven would be this. Like, you've got to have a certain, certain grades to be, I thought it was in marching band, you've got to have certain grade, marching band, right Chuck? Marching, you've got to have certain grades to be in. I think that was, I think that was his good differentiation that it came up.
That's what we, when we start talking about having this policy, a policy be a little bit broader, so the, the idea of athletes not being the only ones that have to abide by something like this, was how do you decipher between those who do and those who don't? And we look like eligibility, to me, was one that we could discuss as being a dividing factor, because, you know, athletics has eligibility, band has eligibility, ROTC with third performances or the drill meets, et cetera, would have eligibility, they abide by the eligibility piece or the grade point average expectation, as well as obviously eligibility as well. So, that's something else that we discussed. When you start talking about including fit, all those other clubs, I mean, there's just, to some degree.
Yeah, I agree.
There's not much that you're, sometimes you're just going to meetings.
There's nothing to take away from them. And I knew that there was something that was going to be that, and it was the eligibility thing, that in that makes sense. I don't think that 50 different clubs that we have, it doesn't make sense, because you can't, so I'm not going to give you your fishing pole and let you go fish. That doesn't, there's, there's just not teeth to it. But to the things that you have to be eligible for, I just, I'm a proponent of, as a district, I'd like to make a statement that we as a district have, these are your, like, I love the way the athletic handbook read. Offense one is this, offense two is this. And then, we're communicating a message across, if you're, you have to be eligible, eligibility looks like this GPA-wise, and as a code of conduct, it looks like this. I really feel like that could help in the decision-making of students and, you know, because I have kids in high school and I've had enough kids in my home and we've had these discussions and sometimes eligibility with these, you know, this type of thing is the thing that can impact their decision of do I or don't I? Do I succumb to peer pressure or don't I?
My question is, this was discussed at the policy committee meeting, there were these discussions around the potential eligibility requirements, those sorts of things. But then, there was no sort of broader policy brought forward? That's what I'm saying.
That's where we.
What happened is the athletic one came forward, but there wasn't something that came.
You know, what he said was, those kind of, and I sent that email today, those type of requirements go in handbooks that are already approved.
But previously.
Previous.
Before you were.
You talk about the previous policy, and we kind of, we kind of ended the discussion knowing that this school year, we're going to be transitioning with staff, so we wanted to keep that open. And then, obviously, we had our, we've had, been able to discuss it really good, at a good length at the Athletic Council, which includes every coach in the district regarding the athletic piece. So, we really, that's when we kind of stopped it at that point. But knowing that some other extracurricular activities do have a code of conduct that they abide by.
And, you know, most school districts, that was the one thing with all the research, most school districts don't have a board policy that deals with 365. It's rolled into the handbooks. So, the board has a policy that you have 365 and certain things, but those are rolled into your handbooks for athletics, marching band, things like that.
Could you list it in the handbook that offense one, two, three, and four, and it includes everybody if you have to be eligible for a club?
I mean, it did the point around, it's like trying to drive consistency. And I guess you can change consistency two different ways. You have it in the different handbooks where they have a consistent sort of policy, essentially in the handbooks. Or, you could do it via an overarching district.
Right. The problem that we had in, in policy was that Niola doesn't have a boilerplate 365 policy. And so, the 365 policies are, are out there for boards, were very much driven by the individual school districts. So, there are, there are, you know, Niola has the policies about drug usage and things like that, now calling it usage along those lines, but they don't have a quote 365 policy specifically for the board to vote on.
What I'm, what I'm hearing to kind of circle this thing back to a decision, is possibly having the board ask our building leadership to look at every organization that has a, say, an academic requirement, a grade point requirement in, and then looking at this 365 policy we have at athletics, seeing if that can apply to every organization. A junior ROTC will have a standard even higher, but that would be the minimum for each organization. It would then be in the student handbook, we'd have to make a revision of that. And then, every student would have that, say, in the student handbook for these organizations, here's your policy. Is that kind of what we're coming to?
So, it just seems like, just listening, that it's, number one, you know, do you want every student to have a deterrent for poor decision-making or behavior? So, no matter what, what they're doing. Number two is, it's, it's either a universal, it's kind of like federal government, you know, they, they mandate a universal, you know, message. Or, is it, is it something, is there a reason why you'd want to let everybody police themselves, so to speak? You know what I mean? Because there must be a reason why, and I don't know what it is, I'm open to anything, but I, there must be a reason why certain clubs would rather police themselves. And I'm assuming it's not just to be, you know, easy, but because somebody, they have to be accountable to somebody. So, it's just a question of whether or not you want a universal umbrella that says this is it for everybody, or you want to do it for every group has, some will have these standards, some might have these, and the fishing club might have this, or, you know, but I don't know, I'd really leave that to you. I don't think we have to be like every other school, but on the other hand, I think you want to make sure we're, you know, we're, there's a reason why it's set up the way it is, I guess.
Well, I don't think we're talking about fishing club, German club, I think we're talking about those that have a grade point.
Eligibility.
Some kind of eligibility.
Eligibility.
You know, the thing about, the thing that you could run into is potentially with having a universal is, if you have it, maybe National Honor Society is going to want to have a lot more restrictive consequence for that, just because of what it means to be a National Honor Society. You know, the requirements to get into National Honor Society, obviously, you know, you have to have a GPA of a 93 in order to be, to just even be considered, and then on top that, you have to be selected. That's already sets, that already sets them apart that, being an athlete, where you have to, you know, you have your eligibility requirement of if it's a next-year thing, passing five classes, or if it's an eligibility during the season of 67%. So, right there, you already have the difference in the consistency at that stage already. So, I think that's something important to think about, because if we're looking at overall, overarching policy, then that's going to get bigger than just alcohol, tobacco, and drugs, because you have the eligibility piece as well. So, do you want to have it consistent for the 365 policy, but it's okay to still be different with the rate, the GPA, the eligibility requirements, et cetera? I mean, that's, it's going to be different at some level.
But we're looking at legal versus illegal, and we're looking at a GPA of 3.8 versus 4.0. I mean, to me, we're, academics is a different thing than we're looking at, if you do something illegal, there's a consequence at this level for you to participate in these things. That's where I feel like we do need a minimal consistency. And if there's something like NHS that it does, it sets you apart at another standard. Athletics is for anybody who qualifies, whether it's a team you try out or a team that is for everybody, there's, I think that that's different than NHS, there's certain things that qualify, that you qualify for. But when we're looking at legal versus illegal, I feel like we need to have a minimum standard that lists out the first consequence, you know, you do it one time, two times, three times, four times, and there should be a consistency there. And that's, that's just my Tiffany's got her hand up.
Thank you. So, I mean, and I do think, I agree with what you're saying. I know that you don't, I think that it would be all right to have the minimum policy. I think there needs to be. You have a perception, the perception would be, why is it just for the athletes? If you let all the other groups police themselves, they could have higher standards, like you're saying, you know, but I think there needs to be that minimum versus the legal or illegal. And then, if they want to have a higher standard, they can say, you know, this is the district policy, we're also going to have these standards here. That would be okay. But perception-wise, as a parent of students who are athletes as well as not athletes, you've got to have something, you can't have a policy that you're only going to say is only for athletes, and you're saying, well, the others have their own and they police themselves. That gets a little murky with people saying, oh, yeah, right, they're policing themselves. I think you've got to be careful with that, because that perception right now that you have out there is, this is just for the athletes. You're only doing this for the athletes. Why are you singling them out? And I think that a lot of people are talking about that and asking, and, I mean, there's grumpy people who are going to complain about everything, but there are a lot of other people saying that is true. Why doesn't it apply to the others? Why doesn't it apply to some of these other groups? So, I think you've got to be careful perception-wise, if you say, well, we're going to let them police themselves.
When I say police themselves, I mean, if there's a situation with.
Accountable. They're accountable.
Yeah, they're accountable. I mean, if there's a situation with that, it's no different than, you know, you know, when you look at band, I mean, if something is brought to the attention of one of our band teachers or instructors regarding, you know, eligibility or even something like this, that always comes to an administrator as well. So, it's not like we have a teacher that's off his corner, hears things and, you know, and then they're doing, they're doing nothing about it. These four groups here, that's always communicated to us as far as, hey, here's what we have, here's the situation, here's what.
Because you have a parent saying, but that policy you have is for athletes. You can't pull them out, this was only a first offense, and, you know, you've never said that band qualifies for this.
Well, that's why, when you look at that, I mean, if you, if you have, if that policy we have right now for 365 is only in the athletic code of conduct, so that policy is for athletes. Band has their policy, NHS will have their policy, which is always communicated and signed off on, just like, that's what they do when they have the all-parent meeting and the coach-student-athlete parent meeting. I mean, that's, that's done the same there, as far as that's concerned as well.
Are they as comparable?
I would say, one is not as comparable right now. I would say the other ones are more, are more harsh.
The one that's not as comparable, there's what you.
And that's about, you know, it was what the coaches really wanted, you know, and that's why it was brought back up. I was ever thinking about any other club or anything like that, but, you know, it's in that.
I think the point about consistency is a fair one. I'm just wondering, like, does this need to go back to the policy committee for discussion? Like, that's the way it should sort of come up? I mean, it feels like, I know there isn't something boilerplate that we can leverage from Niola, but that's something we can.
There's two things that can happen, either go back to policy and policy could have some statement that says that all of these clubs will set this standard, or it can go right back and the administration at the high school and at the junior mind can sit down and say, okay, which clubs have eligibility requirements? And now, what's going to be the standard for each club? We can come back with that kind of decision, news, communicate that back to each club.
And either one, or accomplishing, I guess, this.
I think they will.
The point of consistency is a fair one, whether it's done at an overarching board policy that sets the minimum, and then if the handbooks want to be used to go above beyond that, they can.
The board policy, I think the board policy can happen later. I think if we want to do something, we go back and work as a building right now, get that done. do something, we go back and work as a building right now, get that done, and then we can do more policies.
Right, yeah.
I think that it's important that whatever you guys as administrators, you know, bring to us, and we decide, we should communicate that out as quickly as possible, whatever the decision is of who this impacts, because right now, like you said, it was the coaches who brought it up, and so it was put into the athletic handbook. And to be quite honest, as I dug into the policies, I was really surprised that it said athletic code of conduct or whatever. I really thought I would see the different clubs listed out there.
Well, that's, I think, why we're deleting them, right? I mean, that's, I think, why we're going to have the conversation on taking them out, because now they have been supplemented by quotes in the handbook.
Yeah, so I think this is a great thing, I think, but I just think we need to communicate it as quickly as possible, so that people know now that we're having this discussion, and as soon as we decide, whatever our decision is, we need to communicate, if it's those four that you discussed, that we're following this, then let's communicate that out quickly, that that's what the expectation is.
I agree, and I think it's also important that the people understand that other extracurricular activities do have an expectation for that, because what Tiffany's saying is, is that we'll target thing, and, I'll, moving off of that, I mean, the thing is important that they have, that they know that these, that these do have an expectation regarding that code of conduct. Now, are they all equal? None. Will they ever be? Possibly not, but they're also not the same activity either. And I think, too, if we get too hung up on trying to make everything so equal, I think that could be, that they have to be sticky, just my, my, my opinion. So, you know, and we, we've had the, we went from 365 to the in-season policy, and, you know, we, so that's, when you talk about the whole, only athletics piece, I mean, that's two things to really think about, in my opinion, is one, we do have other extracurricular activities that do have an expectation, and also, you know, the athletic code of conduct and the expectation has always been there, whether it's been in-season or been 365, the athletes have always had, student athletes have always had that expectation that's there, so I'm not really sure where that targeting thought maybe is coming from. But maybe it's because they're not, maybe it's because it's not out there that what we know, what they know, as far as there's four others right here that are having that expectation, I guess.
Another question that I have is, what do we have in place, and maybe this is something you guys would need to talk about, what would, what would cause somebody to, and I hate using these words, but get caught? Is it that the police catch them? Is it that you hear about it, you have a picture proof from somebody, like, what defines that the infraction occurred?
A few questions. We've had all of the above. We've had, you know, we've had, a student, a student obviously gets arrested or citation involving that, and we have any this year or even last year, but in years past, I know that there's been some of the pictures that have popped up with a student athlete being involved in one of those activities, and that's kind of the, that's, those are the two big ones.
What if I don't like Jamie and his family, and I say, hey, did you hear that his kid was drinking, and there's no real proof that his kid was drinking? How, like, like, is that something you would just, as a team, you would be investigating?
Yes.
And, but you would just take my word for it?
No, that would be, that would, that would involve investigation, and at times, that has, decision has been made that the student athlete was...
The policy is now...
Has been violated, and not as a change, right.
It hasn't changed necessarily from what...
It's just how we handle it internally.
In terms of how anything is enforced, changing the consequences of when that infraction, that's the methods that you would determine those infractions, I think are unchanged from what previously exists.
Right. So, that's how, that's how, that's how we've handled that.
Do you see this type of thing taking a ton of time from you and the SROs, the administrators?
Do I think a ton of time? I personally don't see it taking a ton of time. Do I think it might involve more time, potentially, just because you're, you're now looking at all of your students and your athletes all year? So...
Is this where you're going to ask for another assistant principal?
Yeah, yeah, so that's a better, but to be quite honest, personally, yeah, personally, I'm okay with that, because I just think, I think it's extremely important that our students understand the importance of not being around and being involved in that type of activity. So, if, if, if the impact on us is a little bit more time, I hope that that's not the case. I would love us to just not to increase any more time, but if it does, you know, to enforce that, and hopefully that kids, you know, they learn from their mistakes, you know, so if it's a little bit more time, then it's a little bit more time. I mean, just, we have a lot of great kids who are not involved in anything like that, but the reality is, we have kids that are, and, and many times, that leads to other situations and other issues, and it's, that's, that's where the effect, we're trying to prevent from happening. One of the things that you've seen in the code of conduct that has changes, there used to be a reduction piece in there, that was really tough, because there was a certain amount of, there was a thirty or sixty day period where they could, they could get that assessment, it just wasn't, it wasn't serving the purpose that we really wanted it to serve, and that's just to be honest with it. So, that's why that piece is out of it, because, you know, the student athlete or the student would serve their, their consequence, and then you're trying to follow up to make sure they go through that assessment piece, and that could be sixty days down the road, and at that point, is that assessment really, it's, it's too late. We want that assessment to be immediate, so that's kind of why we, that's why we took that out.
That makes sense.
So...
Stephanie Bendeman, thirty-five, Freycourt. I had little kids when this changed over, and for me to, because I can't remember what I did yesterday, but I can remember a mom standing up in the board meeting when we were taking it away, when we were getting rid of 365, and she said, it is tough to be a kid in Springboro. My kids go to parties where there, there's lots of temptations, and she said, don't take this from my kids, because this is an easy out for them to say, I'd love to have that beer, but I'm a cross-country runner, and Coach Adams will kill me, and I want to go to state this year, I am not drinking a beer. And he could be saying that today, and I think, I mean, if you guys are shocked about Montgomery County being the heroin capital of the nation, it's crazy, and we need to do something to give our kids, I think, some leverage. And the other thing, I've got a kid that just got his driver's license, and Kylie will kill me if I say this, but the kids that aren't in sports and clubs take away their parking passes. That would hit them so far. Are you closing your ears? I, I mean, you know, maybe, maybe after you're sixteen and a half, you don't care, but right now in my house, driving is everything. And if we did something like that, that might be a deterrent to the other kids, that you can say, listen, there are, the people that we need to, that we're going to grade points and stuff, there, a lot of them are the people that are our Springboro faces. The marching band is marching wherever, and they're the face of Springboro. These people are athletes, they're the face of Springboro, they've got their uniforms on, go Borough, so that's why, I mean, to me, junior ROTC, the marching team that went to Nationals, that is the face of Borough. And do we want the face of Borough to be kids that drink underage and use drugs, or do we want the straight and narrow kids? And to me, and, and my thing is, coming from the military background, we have the, if you say, this is what our thing is, that these are our consequences, to me, in the military, big air force would make a publication, and you couldn't make it easier, but you could always make it harder. So, if we did that, and National Honor Society says, you know, I appreciate 365 that athletics is doing, but I think, because National Honor Society has a different mission than running cross-country, we're going to be harder. I think that that works, and Jay Rotzey says, listen, you can't get in the military doing drugs, so you're not going to do them here for us. You know, so you could go that way, too, where the clubs can make what we're coming up with harder, but not easier. But I think that, I think that dropping the parking permit would hit a lot of people. How many parking pits do you have permits?
Work on, between the high school and junior high, something, where we, what we want to do, which groups, get that back to you, switch policies, but then we can start doing the board policy stuff after. Kyle and I and John will get together in the next few days and we'll report back.
And I think, I mean, I just, I think the main thing, too, is just community, and I'm not saying as parents, but just community members in general, getting out that we, at some point in time, that we have multiple, you know, extracurricular activities that have a code of conduct that has us included, because that's, I think that's the big misconception. And I don't want to say misconception, just not knowing.
Right.
You know, because all you hear about is athletics, 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 athletics. And so, I think that's where that's coming from, it's just not, I think it's something that's been talked about even for, you know, for a while now, that, you know, even when it was in-season, did anybody else have anything like this? So, I think that's just, just not knowing. And so, I think that would, that would take care of that talking point, and how we want to communicate that, we can discuss, but I think that's important at some point, you know.
Well, and I think right now, it's definitely a topic out there, because we asked Austin, definitely we want to get it out there, and I think he did a great job. He, I saw him, he tweeted it out, he, I mean, it was definitely out there, which is great, that's exactly what we want, so the kids are knowing throughout the summer, August first, this is what the expectation is, but it did bring up the questions with the other, well, what about this? So, Austin did exactly what we, what we wanted with getting it out there, it just brought up the questions with the other, with the other organizations. So, thanks for the discussion.
All right, committee reports. Mr. President, we have no committee reports, know the business, who wants the director?
All right. I have just a couple for you tonight. Item four-point-one, it's going to be the final fiscal seventeen appropriations that I have to submit to the county. So, that basically is where I show them that we're not going to spend more money than the numbers that are on the paper, but what that equates to is the fact of our cash balance on hand coming into the school year, our incoming revenue, and that our appropriations do not exceed that. It just basically are showing that we have the revenue and cash to support the expenditures that we're making. So, that's the final one that's going to be submitted. It has to be submitted by June thirty, that's why it's coming now, we're not closed, we're not ready to close the fiscal year, but I know that the appropriations won't go over. And then also, the next item that's all the same, four-point-one, is to start us out for the next school year. So, we have to have something in place starting July one, allowing us to go until our permanent appropriations are due to the county, which is in September. So, I've already put all of those numbers in for next year, so that we can get started for next year. So, those are, that's the first item, and then the second item is something that we do each year, it allows me, starting for July one, to be able to, you know, do our accounts payable, do payroll, do all of those things. This is the standard approval that the board has to give, directing me that I'm able to do those things. Is there a motion to accept four-one, four-two?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fab?
Yes.
Palage?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Stukey?
Yes.
Mr. President, the superintendent's report, we have four items for your consideration on a consent agenda. First is board policy revision, as sent to you concerning changes in the guidance of policy that Neola has provided us. We have the season pass fee approval that was brought at work session last meeting. As shared with you earlier, these are the final expenses, five-point-three for district communications coverage, with shared resource services, and we have an approval of an administrator contract, two-year contract. She's with us tonight, Carrie Porter, coming to us as the assistant principal for Clear Creek Elementary.
All right. Is there a motion to accept five-one, five-four?
So moved. Please.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
It's just, it's minor, but in the policy, the gifted one...
Yes.
There is, if you read it, it starts to list the gifted in one or more of the following areas, it goes A and then B, and then it kind of, in B, grabs the text from above and repeats it again. You said it's minor, but it, it's a specific academic ability in one or more of the following content areas. Then it goes back up and starts again, the Board of Education shall ensure that procedures are...
Can't see that.
So, it's just that, that section needs to be...
We'll check and see why they sent it to us like that, and type one they're in.
I mean, it's, it's just repeating literally the text above it. It's just got copied again.
We might be the first district in Ohio to find that.
We got finder's fee, that's right. We got finder's fee.
Finder's fee.
We'll check on that. If you see you make a change, we'll do that.
And it's just my, just, yeah, just sometimes it's got copied.
Thank you.
But when I do say I don't read it...
Well, the most important part of that discussion, for the committee members watching, that J.K. Palage reads every board policy. Let it be known.
There you go.
It's written.
Anyone else have to...
Anderson?
Yes.
Fab?
Yes.
Palage?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Stukey?
Yes.
Five-point-six is a first reading to delete the two policies that deal with the student discipline with athletics because of what's going on in student handbook, only as anything to do with our other discussion we're going to have, because it's all dealt with athletics. Again, it's a first reading, and through our conversations in the next few days, we learn, well, we need to keep that in some way, we can delete that before the second reading comes. With that, we can move on then to the director of construction, report, Mr. President, unless there's any questions, Mrs. Cook had already presented for your consideration, six-point-one.
Is there a motion to accept seven-point-one?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
It'll be on the, it'll be on the tape, you can listen to it online.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fab?
Yes.
Palage?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Stukey?
Yes.
Five-seven-point-one through seventy-point-six, Mr. Pedell.
Mr. President, members of the board, for your consideration, there are three actions for various reasons. First, seven-point-one we'll need action on is our personnel report, these are supplemental for football staff.
Is there a motion to accept seven-one?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fab?
Yes.
Palage?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Stukey?
Abstain.
Seven-point-two is a personnel action, and it's another case where we have to have a board member abstain, because they would be acting upon a relative, so it's just a change in hours to go from a full-time to a halftime reading intervention at Clear Creek.
Motion to accept seven-two?
Submit.
Second.
Second.
Thank you for not moving your second to that either.
Yeah.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fab?
Yes.
Palage?
Yes.
Good? Abstain. Stukey?
Yes.
All righty, seven-point-three, what we want to do is, we want to get the approval for the increasing the receptionist position from part-time to full-time, as we talked about earlier. Seven-point-four is our regular personnel report, we have four resignations, none of which were a big surprise, a couple were a little late in coming, but we've got them. We do have several employees, employees that we're going to employ, the speech pathologist is actually coming from Florida, so we did a phone interview with her, and we're very happy to get her, very, all these, we got some great people coming in, that's all I got to say, really good people. Some additional days for Miss Corner, so she can get rolling and ready for the school year. She'll be working, I think, some next week with, with some interviews for some folks that are there at Clear Creek, some, we have a transfer, some additional days for some other folks, a couple other Title-I people that we, they just didn't get the paperwork in, but they have already done that, we're finished with that piece already. Some supplemental personnel, and then some classified substitutes, so that's our personnel report. And then we've got some approval of some student services, private contracts, that are just varied, so if you have any questions, I can do those individually, if you need any of those questioned at this moment in time.
You got one more.
Oops. Seven-six, oh, I forgot about my liability insurance. Oof. Oh, that's a big one.[1794.82] Oops, 7.6, oh, I forgot about my liability insurance, oof, oh, that's a big one, um, our liability insurance this year, it's a little bit later than we normally like to do, because of the fact that, um, uh, it, it expires June 30th, so this is the last board meeting where you guys could approve it, so I'm glad I came, but, um, basically what it boils down to, we have a company that goes out and pulls these bids for us, um, because if not, I'd be pulling my hair out with everything else I got going on-
We'd look better.
And they've been, that's right, hey, I got a haircut yesterday, good timing, see, I don't need, I, I keep it short, so I don't pull out my hair, um, but, um, they, they were, they were trying very hard to get, um, as, you know, as small of an increase as possible, we're doing better in terms of, um, of costs, uh, that we're paying out through our insurance, but we still ended up with a 6.7% increase for next year, uh, overall for our liability insurance, so we're going up from $121,000 last year for property, fleet, and liability and, and excess, um, to 129,219, um, that's why it took so long to bring it for you, normally I bring it to you in May, but, um, they were trying to get it lower, they, they started out at about 12%, so they got it about half, Tom McGilly with School Insurance Consultants, that's who we work with, so, they've done a good job for us, and they've worked really hard, our agent, of course, is, is Wade Insurance, so they're, they also work real good, hard for us too.
All right, approval of item 7, 3 through 7.6, is there a motion?
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bab?
Yes.
Palage?
Yes.
Good?
Yep.
Stukey?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. President, under item A, we have two items before we get to questions, comments, one is the 3% salary increase for all administrators, including the superintendent treasurer for the 2017 school year, follows what the increase is for the certified staff for next year. Will we accept it?
Okay. Motion to accept date one.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bab?
Yes.
Palage?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Stukey?
Yes.
Mr. President, 8.2 is the approval of the OCRC conciliation agreement. Which is what?
That's 5.2.
The agreement, yeah.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bab?
Yes.
Palage?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Stukey?
Yes.
Comments, questions, Mr. President?
Mr. Good?
You can put them on the spot on first.
Yeah.
No, I have no questions, comments at this time, I appreciate, uh, you being so kind today, taking it easy with the new guy.
No one gets to-
Yeah. I'd like to major to just thank you again to all the, the students and families that came out, uh, this season, it was nice to recognize them, and, uh, celebrate their accomplishments in the classroom and on the, uh, the athletic fields, and just welcome to our, our new colleague up here, happy to have Dan on board, and looking forward to, to working with him as we go forward.
Um, I also wanted to thank the athletes that came out, most of them post-graduation, it was just neat to, um, honor them, their accomplishments, and also to welcome our new principal at Clear Creek, excited to have you, I'm sure you will be a great fit, so welcome to the district, and to me, when I reflect on last week in our interviews, it was just neat to have four people come and have such an interest and a passion to be part of moving our district ahead, so, um, I think we selected a great candidate, so welcome to Dan, um, thrilled to have him on the board, but it was just neat to me to be able to interview four people and to have them all, um, so passionate to be part of Springbrough Schools, because it's a great school to be part of, so, thank you to the other three that interviewed, and welcome to Dan.
Well, welcome Carrie, and Dan as well, and piggyback on what Lisa said, what, what I thought was so encouraging is, and Dan's a great candidate, and, and he'll be the, obviously, he's going to fill that position, but we had a lot of, we had a number of good people that, that could have been chosen, so that was, that was, that was fun, um, the people, and they demonstrated the passion and the interest and the caring about this community and the, and the schools, it was, that was refreshing, and, um, so we appreciate, uh, even though they weren't chosen, all of them coming out to, to, uh, show their interest in it, so, anyway, that's, that's all.
I do want to piggyback of the student athletes that came out, and I know there were probably others that weren't able to make it, and so we, you know, we have great representation at the state level, as well as locally, uh, welcome Carrie, welcome Dan, and, um, you know, we had a piece of red history, you know, we had a couple that, you know, had applied before, and, you know, it, uh, it was not an easy decision to go through, but we all feel very comfortable with, uh, Mr. Good's coming on, and welcome. Say you want something there.
Just a quick announcement, um, I had the opportunity, really the privilege, to serve on this strategic planning team with the Clear Creek Fire Department, as a school district, um, he wanted to make sure, uh, the new fire depot during the last year, he wanted to make sure that, um, there were a lot of different stakeholders that helped with the strategic planning process with Clear Creek Fire, we've had two four-hour meetings, today was the second four-hour meeting, great conversation about moving the fire district forward, but as appreciation, uh, for allowing me to be a part of that, he wanted me to give the board members, um, a lot of times in the military, the start in the military years ago, where generals would give tokens, or like a medal, almost like a coin, that would have maybe the Marine, um, or the Army insignia on the front and their core values on the back, the Clear Creek Fire Department has now their coin, but they also have, lack their term of poker chip, but it's got a wonderful picture in the front, Clear Creek Fire District, but on the back talks about their core values of honesty, integrity, professionalism, respect, self-discipline, speak truth to power, and technical competence, and it's a token that he just wanted to make sure all the board members had, if you're involved, it's great to put as a bookmark before you put it on the shelf, but this is from the fire chief, as a thank you for being a part of the Clear Creek Fire Department, um, and with that, Mr. President, all the announcements I have tonight.
There is no, uh-
No executive session, so we are adjourned. All right.